Forgive us, folks, we're a couple of minutes late. Had a couple of late, last-minute issues to resolve there. At this point, I'll call the Tuesday, December 20, 2011, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order, and I'll lead us in an invocation, if you'll join with me, please. Heavenly Father, thank you again for the opportunity to come to us, and we especially thank you during this Christmas season when we celebrate the birth of Christ. And Father, I pray that we'd have His Spirit, the Spirit that is ours because of the work He done, that can be ours because of the work He's done for us. I pray we'd have that Spirit throughout all of the year, especially in the way that we deal with our fellow citizens and the way we handle their business. We need His wisdom, we need His love, we need His judgment. And we ask for it. We pray your blessing on each one here in this county, and when we receive it, we'll be careful to give you the glory for it, for we ask it in Christ's name. Amen. Join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag, please. Excuse me, I'm gonna... I apologize. We have Boy Scout troop number 175, chartered by Broad Street United Methodist Church. If you could indulge these gentlemen, would y'all come up and lead us in the pledge? I apologize for not recognizing you earlier. Just come through the gate here, gentlemen, if you would.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments to the agenda from the staff this evening?
Mr. Chairman, we do have one adjustment. It would be Memo 12A, and this is directly related to Item J, which is Memo Number 12, so I would recommend, if possible, putting it directly after that item. It is a budget amendment, number 30, to create an EMS Special Services Enterprise Fund and appropriate funds from inception through June 30, 2012.
Okay. Is that all you have, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any adjustments to the agenda from any member of the board? If not, floor is open for a motion for approval of this agenda as amended by Mr. Smith.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended by Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll move immediately to public hearings this evening, and I'll declare the meeting to be in public hearing in consideration of an economic development incentive for an undisclosed company based on a $5 to $5.5 million investment in Iredell County. I believe we have with us Mr. John Merrick and Mike Smith this evening. Mr. Merrick, pleased to have you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson, Commissioners. I'm coming before you this evening on behalf of a company that we have previously referred to as Project Scorpio. I can now divulge that that is C.R. Anzrood. They are a company based in Troutman. They manufacture and service CNC routers, and they're going to be, they're planning an expansion to their current facility. The expansion will be about 30,000 square feet. They're planning to begin construction first quarter of 2012 and finishing that construction up by the third quarter of 2012 and beginning adding equipment and employees at that time. They will be spending approximately $5 million to $5.5 million in capital investment over a 14-month period. That includes $1.5 million for building construction and $3.5 to $4 million for equipment and fixtures. They're anticipating creating 30 jobs overall, with 10 being created in the first year and approximately 10 in the second and third year each. And the average wage is about 140% of the county average. The purpose of this expansion is to increase their competitiveness with companies that are providing the same types of products from offshore, and to do so by increasing their level of vertical integration of their manufacturing processes. They have requested an incentive between $84,711 and $92,656 over five years, and that is the standard incentive as proposed by the statute that Ira County has set for tax grant incentives. The State's for Regional Development does support Anzrood's bid for this grant. They are a company based in Iredell County. They do meet the qualifications for the amount of investment and the number of employees created. It is a competitive situation, and they are in good standing, to the best of our knowledge, on all taxes and have no outstanding issues with Dena or OSHA. So we would like to request that on their behalf this evening.
Any questions? Mr. Merrick? I have one. You said they would begin construction the third quarter of...
In the first quarter of 2012, yes. They are, it's contingent on permitting, they're in the process of getting their permits right now. They will be, they will begin construction as soon as those permits are issued. They've already named P.S. West as the construction company for that project.
All right, good. Any other questions? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in regard to this matter? This is a public hearing. Okay. Hearing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and the floor is open for discussion or motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the $84,711 to $92,656 incentive over a five-year period, based on the company's investment ranging between $5 million to $5.5 million, and contingent upon the contract being executed within 180 days.
Okay. Motion for approval of this request from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. I'll again declare the meeting to be in a public hearing in consideration of an economic development incentive for an undisclosed company based on a $9 million investment in Iredell County. Mr. Smith, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Thank you, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. The company that we are talking about can now be disclosed. It's actually Pate Dawson Company. This is a company that's been in business in North Carolina for more than 100 years. They're headquartered in Goldsboro. What this company is looking at doing is going to the Statesville Shell Building in the Statesville Business Park. This particular project offers our, shows us an extremely good example of a public-private partnership, because this particular project was built on a public site, and there was a private developer that helped with this building. What we would be requesting, over a five-year period based on their $9 million investment, is the grant at the 80% level. This would be approximately $143,001 over a five-year period. This company will be providing 49 new jobs over a three-year period. There is a potential for further expansion. These jobs would pay over an average of $47,000 a year, plus benefits. So we're very excited about this company choosing Statesville, and would ask that the Commissioners vote in favor of this industrial grant.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Smith? I want to congratulate you on your work on this project. I think you resurrected this deal more than once. It looked like it was going to get away, and you kept bringing them back, and you're to be congratulated.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience who cares to speak in regard to this? If not, we'll declare the public hearing closed, and the floor is open for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the $143,001 incentive over a five-year period based on the $9 million investment and contingent upon a contract being signed within 180 days.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Mitchell in favor of this request. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you again, sir. Okay, that brings us to administrative matters. Mr. Smith, it's all yours.
First request that we have is Memo Number Three, and this is a request from the Sheriff's Office for approval of Budget Amendment Number 24 to appropriate funding from Seized Funds to Scan Incorporated.
Okay.
Philip?
Good evening. Merry Christmas.
Yes, sir. Merry Christmas.
What we're asking to do is appropriate $5,000 to Scan Incorporated. Scan has become a partner with us, and through their programs and the things that they offer in reference to child abuse, we look at them as a partner who can help us. And their active role helps reduce child abuse and domestic violence in Iredell County. We're pretty pleased with the partnership that we've developed with them, and this helps them meet their program needs.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Phillips? Okay, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 24, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Motion for approval of this request from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Memo Number Four is a request for approval of Budget Amendment Number 25 to appropriate additional funding to Mitchell Community College for operating costs. I had a conversation with Dr. Ralph Bentley and Dr. Doug Easton a little while back, and the college is currently faced with a significant shortfall in their general operating budget. Much of this is due to the addition of the new building in Mooresville, as well as some utility rates that have gone up fairly significantly for them. And based on that, we've put together a proposed Budget Amendment Number 25, which would take $125,000 out of contingency, which is currently at $250,000, and allow the college to utilize $125,000 from their capital outlay and move that total of $250,000 to their current expense, which would allow them to cover the anticipated shortfall that they have.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Smith?
Is that their anticipated shortfall through the end of the budget year?
Yes, ma'am. And this admittedly, and in the letter from Dr. Easton and Dr. Bentley, is an issue that we will probably have to deal with long-term going forward. This is, this is not the first time.
Do you know the percentage the utilities increased in the city of Statesville?
I do not.
They warned us about this at budget time. They, they said this would happen, so...
I believe one of their issues is, and I don't know if there's a resolution or not to this, is the way that they're metered at the school is one significant issue that they have.
I think they've approached the city more than once, seeking some type of commercial rate, and weren't able to secure that. We will probably hear about this again in the winter planning session, and at least... I told them we'd look at our revenues and maybe incrementally resolve this problem over time, but we didn't really have a level of comfort where we can make a guarantee at this point. But in any event, that's the request before you. Any other questions? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve Budget Amendment Number 25, or is it 26?
Yeah, 25.
It says Budget Amendment 25, but in the body it says 26, so 25.
25, okay. Motion for approval for Commissioner Robertson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
The next item is Memo Number Five, and this is a request for approval of Budget Amendment Number 26 to transfer funds from appropriated fund balance, contingency, and depreciable assets to depreciable assets computers in the code enforcement budget to complete an ongoing munis permitting software project. This may be a tag-team presentation between myself and Lynn Niblock, but I'll do it, and if you need to ask Lynn anything, he's here. A little bit of background on this request, it's basically two parts. If you look at the budget amendment, the amount, the $25,000 that is proposed to be taken from appropriated fund balance is an amount that matches basically a settlement that was made in our last fiscal year's budget. There was a permitting software that was not being completed, and we were, cut a check for $25,000, and it was put into the general fund. We have since found that we do not have as much money as we thought in the permitting to complete the current permitting system, because that money was basically not pulled in and rolled over for this year. So that's the request for $25,000. It would allow us to complete our new permitting system, which is well underway in this current budget year. The second part is basically a byproduct of that. Through the work that's been going on for the permitting system, we've found that there's a need and a great bit of benefit, public benefit, to putting in place what's called a content management system. This would allow us, through our permitting processes, through our finance processes, HR, on down the line, to take a lot of the paper copies that we currently have and have them in a digital format. That will allow us, as well as in some cases, the public to access certain records, and allow us also to get away from the record, the hard copy records retention that we're already facing, and we've got some severe storage issues. What we're proposing is that a portion of this, it's a $41,690 project, that $16,690 be taken from contingency, which is at $125,000, and that $25,000 be taken from depreciable assets, which is basically for equipment replacement if needed, which would equal your total. That would all, including the $25,000, be shifted to the code enforcement budget, and that would allow us to complete both of these projects. We should, if we go into the content management side of this, see some significant efficiencies that we would not see if we, if our current vendor were not going through the process now. That's one of the main reasons we brought it to you. They travel from Maine, and there are significant travel costs associated, and we can basically cut down on a good bit of that if we take advantage of this now. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. I know that's a little bit complicated.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Smith?
The $25,000 that the county was reimbursed is going towards this project.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of Budget Amendment Number 26.
Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. The next item is Memo Number Six, and this is a request for approval of Budget Amendment Number 27 to recognize funding from the Department of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention. Susan Blumstein is going to make this presentation, and I'm actually going to hand over the next several to her after this one.
Okay. Budget Amendment Number 27 is to recognize an additional $54,407 of ERA funding that's come through Department of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention for two of our area programs to continue the programs that they had in place last year for gang prevention. One is through Appropriate Placement Options, and the other is Barium Springs Home for Children. There are no county tax dollars involved with this, and county acts as a conduit for these funds to the programs.
Any questions, Ms. Blumstein? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 27.
Motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Memo Number Seven is a request from Iredell Statesville Schools to go ahead and withdraw the remaining amount that I've been carrying in the county's fund balance reserve for schools for several years. These funds accumulated over time for interest earnings on some bond accounts for the time period where the additional tax had been levied for the 2008 general obligation bonds, prior to the bond payments actually having to start being made, and in a couple of years where the amount that was estimated for bond trustee fees was less than what I had budgeted. So we carried forward these funds. They have $123,106.97 remaining, and Dr. Miller sent a letter, and they do want to draw these funds out to use for the next phase of the Career Academy and Technical School in Troutman. So I ask that you approve this budget amendment.
Okay. Any questions?
What is the next phase? What are they going to do?
They're, they're doing incremental projects related to that building. Mr. Miller may speak more clearly about it.
I was going to ask. Those projects are based on curriculum design. They're planning on a digital media class beginning in the fall next year, and so this is to jumpstart that project, so we'll have it ready for school enrollment in the fall. Dr. Miller, is it enough to finish it? No, we'll use additional funds, but we need to start this spring and have it finished by next fall. Let me rephrase the question. To, do you have enough funds identified? Yes, sir. And appropriated to complete the project? Yes, sir. This is for the design work and the initial work that will be done in the building. It does not include the equipment. That CTE funds, which are identified through the career technical education, will pay for the equipment that goes into it. So these funds will do the building piece of it, but the actual equipment will be up and up. Okay, so we won't be visiting this project again, trying to get another $30,000 to finish it. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If there are none, the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve this appropriation to Iredell Statesville School System.
Okay. Motion for approval from Mr. Robertson. Any discussion?
Budget Amendment 28, sorry.
Yes, sir. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And your next budget amendment is because the school system has submitted a request for approval of three applications for lottery proceeds totaling $501,807. The funds are currently available and on deposit with the North Carolina State Treasurer, and we would like to go ahead and request the budget amendment to go along with it so that once the funds are transferred to our bank account, I won't have to come back a second time. The applications are attached. One is a lighting upgrade, debt service payment. The next is a water and wastewater upgrade, debt service payment for Woodland Heights. And the third is a Brawley School parking lot and entrance improvement.
Okay. Any questions?
Does that pretty, does that pretty much drain the lottery proceeds that are available? It brings it down to, I believe we have about $10,000. Yes, sir. It brings it down pretty low. What we do on those projects is we front the money from our fund balance, and then we draw it down to reimburse our fund, that keeps our lottery funds up. Yeah, before they get confiscated. Right.
Exactly. When the, at one point, when the balance is built up, the governor did put a freeze and withheld a couple of deposits to the county's lottery accounts. So we found that it is best to draw the funds down as close to zero as possible.
Good.
That's good, smart thinking. Okay, any other questions? If not, the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we approve Budget Amendment 29 to move lottery funds to the Iredell Statesville School System.
Okay. Motion for approval from Mr. Robertson. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Amendment Number Nine is to bring back before the board an amended lease agreement with Twin Oaks Golf Course. This was first presented to you on November 15, 2011, and since that time, Patty Keith has been in negotiation with Chris Odom, where that discussion had come up that evening. She has been in discussions with Chris Odom and negotiated for him to become a partner in Twin Oaks Golf Club LLC. And the amendments that are shown in your memo are recommended resulting from those negotiations and the investment to be made in the golf course property that is operated by Twin Oaks Golf Club LLC. Those changes include the existing leases for the period December 31, 2008 through December 31, 2007. We recommend termination of the existing lease on December 31, 2011, and execute a new lease beginning January 1, 2012, and continuing until December 31, 2020. Rental payments, the existing lease requires monthly rental payments of $2,000 plus 3% of the gross annual revenue due within 20 days after the final accounting for the prior year, but no later than March 31. We recommend monthly rental payments of $2,000 with a waiver for the existing lease for December 2011 and for the months of January 2012 through August 2012 for the new lease. Monthly rental payments will be increased 4% January 1, 2013, with an additional 4% increase each subsequent year through January 1, 2020. In addition, the percentage of gross annual revenue due to Iredell County will remain at 3% for the lease terminating December 31, 2011. And then, beginning with calendar year December 31, 2012, and each subsequent year thereafter, Twin Oaks will pay 3.5% of gross annual revenue within 20 days after the final accounting. The other change would be in the termination clause. The existing lease may be terminated by either party without cause upon 20 days' notice. We recommend termination by either party without cause, with one year's notice by Twin Oaks Golf Club LLC, and seven years' notice by Iredell County. This will effectively be just about a break-even, is what was presented to you earlier. It will save the county about $155,000 in cost that we would incur over the period for having to bush hog the property. David Lambert, Solid Waste Director, does not anticipate that we would need that property for a period up... for a period of about 24 years for either disposal or soils to cover our existing landfill We're not, at this point, not aware of any downside. And we would recommend these changes for your approval.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Blumenstein?
Why are we changing the termination policy to seven years? Why would we have to give them a seven-year notice if we want to terminate the lease agreement?
Because they're going to make a major investment into the property and that gives them some security to be able to receive some return on their investment.
And why are they requesting we not receive payments from December 2012 through August -- or December 2011 through August 2012?
For a period to make further investment in the property. And the rental rate and the percentage of sales was increased to account for that.
I was going to ask, I'm sorry. I was going to ask, and it looks like going from, looking at your payback schedule, which kind of is our guarantee that we get our money back and then some, is basically assuming that next year that sales go up 1%, the following year 2%, and then it's pretty much a 3% annual increase, you know, for the next five or six years. In there, it showed from FY '09 to '10 that they had a 17% loss in revenue last year, or rather this year it looks like they're going to increase it 8%. Can y'all share with us, you know, other than just, was there anything other than the general economy that made it go down 17%? And is there anything that you did this year to make it go up above the 3% that you're kind of projected for long-term growth?
I think Patty Keith's here and she can better answer that question.
Ms. Keith, if you would, come to the podium, please, so everyone can hear you.
And I would say I've reported to y'all on a fiscal year basis, so it's going to be a little different.
Okay. The premise of my question is, is we have a spreadsheet that describes how we're going to get the money back. Basically, as Ms. Griffin noticed, that we won't be collecting the revenue for a while. Y'all are going to use that money to put it back into the course, to invest, and then, but we would recoup that money through higher fees in subsequent years.
Correct.
So that's why I'm asking the question. My question specifically is, it appears that from FY '09 to FY '10 that you saw a 17% reduction in gross sales. And then from '10 to '11, which is this year, you saw an 8% increase. But if we look at, and then if we look at all the years that are in the budget going all the way out to 2020, basically you are assuming that you can grow the revenue stream by 3% a year.
That's correct.
So my first question is, was there a reason, other than the general economic downturn, that you saw a 17% drop going from '09 to '10?
Yes.
Okay.
The reason for that was that we lost our greens the beginning of '09 due to one of my ex-employees applying the wrong product onto the greens.
Okay.
It had a residual effect that took us a long time to be able to reseed them and get them back. They are back at this time and the business has started to increase. I now have a partner and investors interested and we plan on renovating the greens even further and I believe that will increase our revenue even more.
Okay. And this year it went up 8%. Is that just kind of balancing because it had gone down so much the previous year?
Yes, that and the fact that the greens are in better shape now than they were.
Okay. In '09, your revenues were just under $250,000 a year.
Mm-hmm.
And according to your current projection, you won't be able to get back to that sale, that level of sales until sometime between 2015 and 2016?
I hope prior to that. I now have a partner who is a PGA pro who intends on actively teaching, doing clinics, and getting more tournaments, and we hope that will benefit us substantially.
Could I add something? These spreadsheets were, I prepared these spreadsheets to be a very conservative estimate on what we actually received the last couple of years.
Okay.
These are my estimates.
Okay.
Because I didn't want to bring something before you that was, had big increases.
Okay.
I was being conservative.
So in your opinion, then, are we, it sounds to me like these 3% figures are actually quite conservative and we should not have a problem. It probably won't take as long as you're expecting because it sounds to me like probably that the actual growth rate is maybe almost double this amount.
Yeah, I believe so. I think that the next year won't be that great because of the renovation, but after that it should keep going up.
Okay. Well, actually, yeah, she's got plugged in two years of very, very low growth.
Okay.
Did you have a comment, sir?
Yes, if I could.
If you could put your name, please.
Yes, my name's Chad Odom and Patty and I came to an agreement a month ago per the county commissioner's request for her to meet with me, investigate what options she may have as me becoming a partner. I will tell you, I think these numbers are very conservative. We want to bring back to the county a place that is affordable golf for all people, kids, ladies, seniors, and men alike. Our goal is to grow and make this a highlight of the county. It is my goal and I assure you that this will be a highlight of the county for the next nine years.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask Susan a question?
Yes, sir.
Susan, you said that we probably won't need that site for 24 years except for disposal rates and future technologies could change that. Are you saying that we may be able to go further or are you thinking it may be able to drop down? Or does it?
We may be able to go further.
Okay.
Than 24 years, yeah. And of course, David is very good at what he does and that's why he said, you know, technology could change, but based on current technology, he believes 24 years before we would need it.
I've asked David about the long lead time and he said the, from the time, there's a pretty long lead time from the time, he says, from the time he needs, we need to use this space for landfill and when he has to start all of the steps that he has to go through to get it, to get it open. And I think this timeframe that we're given the golf course kind of coincides with his timeframe for when he would have to start doing stuff anyway. So we're not taking, I don't think we're taking an unnecessary risk. We're not necessarily doing them any favors. It takes years to get the permits and go through all the process to open up a new section of the landfill or solid waste facility. He's trained me.
My issue in regard to this is that I'm putting in, I put in a position that I'm not real comfortable unless playing entrepreneur with somebody else's money. I'd feel a lot more comfortable in doing that with my own money, but nevertheless, we didn't really want to get in the golf course business. It just happened to be there. Exercising the proper oversight, though, I would assume that in this lease there's some provision that if the lease payments are not paid, then does that mean that the termination of the lease is immediate or?
You know what? I did not bring a copy of the existing lease, but I am positive there is some language because our fine attorney drafted it.
Okay.
I don't have it committed to memory, but I've never drafted a lease that didn't protect the landlord.
Okay.
When I was representing the landlord.
I'm going to be in support of this and the reason that I am, I know there is at least one other offer on the table at this time. However, I felt more of a moral obligation than normal because I believe that Ms. Keith had bargained with the county in good faith and the county had in turn bargained with good faith. If someone else, I'll be quite frank about it, if someone else had approached the county yet they outsee that, I may have found, may have felt differently. But I do think that these people, I do feel a moral sense that these people are afforded an opportunity. To be further frank about it, I do question whether they can turn it around for the amount of existing capital that they're put in it. But if they do so, some improvement, that may entice some other investors and they'll do far better than anticipated and I certainly hope that's the case. Okay, so the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we amend the lease agreement as presented.
Okay. Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion's approved 4-1.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
The next item that we have is memo Number 10, and this is a request to call for a public hearing on January 3, 2012 regarding a release of zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville.
Bear with me one second while I get our map up. Where's the? Thank you. I'm not used to a new version. All right. What you have before you tonight is a request by Dale Tweedy, Stonegate Developers LLC to call for a public hearing to consider a release of zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville. The property is located on Brawley School Road next to Brawley Middle School. It's a 1.796 acre parcel and currently the development that is proposed to be reviewed by the town of Mooresville is a drive-up grocery store called Swiss Farms. This is before you tonight because they have petitioned the town of Mooresville for city services. The city will consider their annexation request in June of next year. However, the developer would like to proceed forward with reviewing plans with the town of Mooresville prior to then. Therefore, if you call for this public hearing, you can consider this request at your next meeting on January 3.
What's a drive-up grocery store?
How it's been explained to us is...
I'm just becoming acclimated to Whole Foods. My wife and daughter drug me there. Some of the people go there, it's a little freaky looking, but food's good.
What I understand is it will actually be a dual-sided store where you can actually present your list or call in your list and literally drive up and they get those groceries, you pay for them, and you drive off without leaving your vehicle. And just to, at your last release of jurisdiction request in October, there was some public confusion in thinking that this board was actually approving that specific development. So I just wanted to clarify for the public that we're not considering necessarily that store and approving it, we're just approving that release of jurisdiction.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Do you call in your coupons as well? I mean...
That's a good question.
That's crazy.
Any other questions? The request is to call for a public hearing. With no further questions, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Memo Number 11 is a request from the Health Department for approval of new current procedural terminology codes and related fees.
I'm here to request approval of three new CPT or billing codes and the related fees. We have a need to add a CPT code for urine microscopic for $13 and also Medicaid is now telling us that we have to bill our prenatal care in package codes and we would like to add a CPT code for prenatal care for four to six visits with a related fee of $850 and a CPT code for prenatal care for seven-plus visits at $1,300. And you will understand or remember that our fees are set to cover the costs when the fees are collected at 100%, so a lot of our clients would slide if they were not a Medicaid client.
Okay. Okay. Any questions, Ms. Campbell? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of the new CPT billing codes and the related fees.
Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Memo Number 12 is a request from EMS for approval to create a specialty services ambulance division.
Good afternoon.
Yes, sir.
At the last meeting, we basically had the directive to create a long-term plan to handle the convalescent services in this county. On December 16, we took over the short-term plan and have been handling the non-emergency calls in this county at that point. What you have in front of you is a plan to do it long-term wise. Our recommendation is that you do approve the plan for a specialty services division of EMS and loan the funding initially for that. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
Let me just speak to that just a moment.
Okay.
Maybe it'll prompt some questions. I met with Mr. Clor, Mr. Jackson, Ms. Blumenstein, County Manager Ms. Smith, and the directive I gave them was to, basically my intention was to be there as the chairman of the loan committee at the bank and the board of commissioners serve as the loan committee and instruct them to come back with a business plan where we would loan them the initial capital and operational costs to get these folks started with the understanding that they would pay the county back over a period of time. That's my understanding, the cash flows out, that you can pay the county back in approximately five years.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So from that point on, it would be operated as an enterprise fund. Now, subsequently coming to understand, that's not, it's quite a pure of thought as I was originally thought because there is some overlap as far as who runs it, whatever, and if we have to pull somebody here or somebody there.
Yes, sir.
And I understand that and I'm going to continue to be very understanding of that, but I do, in principle, still think we should adhere to the guidelines that this will be an enterprise fund, that we can use to take care of your capital cost for the emergency side as it relates to ambulance and the convalescent side as much as possible in the future without depleting the general fund. That's the understanding that we have.
Yes, sir.
Can we use the, I mean...
can pay for upgrades for its functions, but it can't pay for things outside of that department? So does the enterprise fund that comes from convalescent receipts, can it be used to fund additional ambulances and stuff for emergency, for emergency services? Or must it stay confined only to the convalescent transport?
I'll have to refer that to Susan or Ron.
I can speak to that, and Susan, correct me if I'm wrong. I think in the first five years, we're, because we are going to have a, basically, $100,000 payment back to the general fund, we are going to have to treat it as closely to an enterprise as possible, if not totally. From that point on, it's our anticipation that because we won't have that large payment hanging over, you know, this division's head, we will be able to offset other costs on the 911 side based on those additional revenues.
Yes, and one thing is, this is a governmental function, and we will not be issuing any public debt for this, as we have in solid waste. That's what restricts us in solid waste, is that we've issued debt, and we've pledged the revenues from that operation for that debt, and that's not the case here.
Let me ask you this, if I can continue to, along the line of thought that Mr. Robertson brought up. I assume by that, Ms. Blumentein, it would be acceptable that if Mr. Clor needed another station, and we were going to have a volunteer fire department host us, and we needed some, to buy some furniture, or computers and whatnot, to place an EMS crew there, would it be permissible to fund that as well? Even though they're not doing convalescents, we could fund it out of this enterprise fund?
Yes, sir, you can.
Okay.
And I would like to point out, too, that the plan that we've put together actually funds the depreciation. It looks like with the planned vehicle purchases and equipment, we'll set aside funds each year, $110,000, so that the next time we need to replace those Sprinter ambulances, or some of those other expensive items like stretchers and heart monitors, we'll have the money to do that.
Okay.
How many calls have you run since December 16th, just on this side?
The last numbers I ran are about 52. I was counting Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday.
That's pretty good.
Any other questions?
Just a general one, not a financial one. Staffing and recruiting, kind of, where are you?
We actually have just finished up an assessment center. We were doing anyway to fill some holes we have in our agency. We do have enough people on board that we can fill the convalescent service with those interviews.
Okay. Good.
And if we ordered these ambulances, Mr. Clor, or these Sprinter vans, transport vans, let's call them that, what's turnaround time on getting those? Are they pretty much a run-of-the-mill that you can get?
If we can find the piggyback that meets our needs, then we can get them between 30 and 45 days from the initial approval of the board. If not, we'll have to go out for bid, which will extend that timeframe.
But do you have adequate equipment at this time to fill that gap?
Right now, yes, we do.
But you're running it pretty hard.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're leasing two ambulances to allow us to have two spares in case something does happen to an ambulance now.
Okay.
Were those the vehicles that were there Thursday?
The green ones, yes. The vans with the green stripes.
The Sprinter vehicles that we're talking about buying?
No, those were the ones we were leasing there, van-type ambulances that we borrowed from our ambulance vendor, or we're leasing from our ambulance vendor.
Is that the type we're going to purchase?
No, the ones we were going to purchase, I'm not sure if you were there when the Sprinter, well, it was a Sprinter there, it didn't have any markings on it. It was rather, a little bit larger than the vans that you saw, had more headroom. It was a newer model.
There were two there.
No, those were probably just the leased ambulances.
But is that what we're buying? That's what I'm asking.
No, ma'am.
No.
The Sprinters are a Dodge Sprinter, just a little bit different.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, thank you again, Mr. Clor, for your work up to this point. Looks like you've done a good job.
Thank you.
And express our thanks again to your staff.
I will.
Okay, the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the EMS director to create a specialty services ambulance division.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion?
If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
The next item is memo 12A, and this was the addition. This will actually be for budget amendment number 30, to actually appropriate the funding to set up this division.
This will appropriate $500,000 of general fund fund balance to loan the funds to the EMS Special Services Enterprise Fund. It'll actually be shown as a receivable from that fund next June 30th. So I'd ask for the approval of this amendment. It also appropriates the funds needed to operate through June 30th for the gap, plus the operational period through June 30th, and recognizes $486,780 in anticipated fees we'll receive during that time.
What's the lag time between, between when you bill Medicare, Medicaid, or whatever, and you receive the money? Is this the cap, are these fees, is this cash received, or is that, is that your accounts' receivable?
That's anticipated, what we will actually collect.
Okay.
And it's about 40 to 45 days total. The Medicare, and these are pre-approved trips, so it's a different, it's different than anything we've seen in EMS before, and Medicare actually turns around in about 14 days.
Wow. As a member of the loan committee, can we expect our first payment? Will that be in the budget year 2013?
Yes, sir, we'll budget it next year.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and plan to cash that check then. Okay. All right. Clor's open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve budget amendment 30 to create the EMS Special Services Enterprise Fund, and appropriate those funds from inception through June 30th, 2012.
Okay. Motion for approval from Ms. Griffith. Any discussion?
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you folks again. Yes, sir.
Memo number 13 is a request for approval of the October and November 2011 refunds and releases, and there are no county commissioners' names on these rolls.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion for approval.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Vice Chairman Norman for approval. All in favor say aye.
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 And final item is a request for approval of the December 6th, 2011 minutes.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion. I move we approve the 2000, I mean, the December 6th, 2011 minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Smith. That brings us down to announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. We have one announcement of the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, there's one announcement, and the Juvenile Crime Prevention Program Committee, one announcement. We move now to appointments to boards and commissions, the Facilities Task Force for Schools. And I apologize, I forgot to make that phone call today, I had too much going on, but I've got somebody. Move to postpone that one, Mr. Chairman. Okay, thank you, sir. Motion to postpone. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Out.
Nursing Home Advisory Committee, we have one appointment. Floor is open for nominations.
Motion to postpone?
Motion to postpone from Mr. Robertson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there any unfinished business to come to our attention?
Yes. I have some with respect to our discussions that we had with the red line.
Mm-hmm.
I was hoping that I could, I could ask the county attorney to look into four questions that I have. I don't expect him to be able to answer it at this time.
Okay.
Okay? Mr. Pope, the, we were presented in our, during the last meeting with some options about special assessment districts and tax increment financing, and it was presented to us that if we were to support this concept of the red line, that the property, that the general public in Iredale County would not be affected. Sometimes if things don't seem quite right, it makes me ask a few questions. They said in order that these, that these special assessment districts would not be, the members of the district would have to vote the tax increase upon themselves. And what I did not get answered was, who votes to be in the district? For instance, if there's a, if there's a convenience store, and it's owned by a chain, who gets, who votes? And if there's a grocery store next to it that's worth 10 times the amount of money, on 10 times the land, and it's also owned by a chain, who gets to vote, and is their vote the same? And then that kind of relays into the biggest property owner down there is Lowe's, so does that mean that the CEO of Lowe's votes, and is his vote the same as the convenience store company? So it's kind of like, who gets to vote, and are the...
May I make sure I understand a question?
Okay.
Are you asking as between the owner and the tenant? Who votes?
No, I feel sure it would be the owner, but if the owner is a corporation, who votes is number, is number one. My question is, how do they determine who votes? And number two, is it weighted? Okay? So it's like, somebody can have a parcel number, and if you have a parcel number, you get to vote, I guess, once, but if your parcel is a third of an acre worth $20,000, let's say, and then somebody else has six acres worth a million dollars, they both have one PIN number, do they get to, do they only get to vote once? Or, you know, kind of like, you know, my farm, I think, has four different PIN numbers. If I was a business, and my business was on four different parcels, then do I get to vote four times? Whereas if somebody else's business is all on one parcel, do they only get to vote once? So that's why I'm asking, is who gets to vote, and how's it weighted? Those are the first two questions. My third question, and to give everybody a little background, is, you know, we are a subset of state government, and we have had, we have had members of the General Assembly vote to excuse different categories of people from paying county taxes. So my third question is, if people, if property owners along the red line, in fact, vote themselves to be in one of these special assessment districts, can the General Assembly then vote after the fact to exclude certain property member, certain property owners or categories of owners from having to pay the taxes in that district? And then my final and fourth question is, if there are shortfalls due to these exemptions that the General Assembly might be able to give people, or if there's just general shortfalls, period, then is the county on the hook to make up those differences? And I asked question number four multiple times, and he basically said, no, that just can't happen, that just can't happen, but anybody who's been awake for the last four years knows that there are a lot of people thought they were going to have money, and they don't have money, and bad things happen when you don't have the money you thought you were going to have. I just want to know, is something bad going to happen to us? So those are the four questions. Do I need to write them, or do you understand them, or do I need to do anything else?
I think I wrote them down.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I need a little time.
Say again?
I need a little time to research that.
I don't know, yeah, good luck, because I asked those questions, and I just haven't gotten an answer, but I've been asking staff folks, I'm at the point now where I'm, I would like somebody with some legal expertise to tell me, what risk am I taking to move down this path? Or, excuse me, what risk am I exposing the taxpayers of Iredale County to if I move down this path? That's the question I'm asking.
Right. I can answer one of those questions right now. What are your potential costs you're exposing the taxpayers to? A lot.
If we get into the exemption game, I'm out. I'll play it out right now, because we start picking winners and losers, we will be the losers.
I'm editing my thoughts here because, I hope my preacher's not watching my wife chastise me the other night for my salty language. In the process of decision-making, I was, Ms. Smith, you've heard this, please indulge me, in the, there are two approaches to decision-making. There's the correspondence theory of decision-making, and this is in, what do you decide, the business plan, whether you try on a policy decision, and the correspondence theory of decision-making says this, you come up with a business plan or a theory, and is it plausible? Well, it sounds good, and then you compare that theory, business plan, philosophy, whatever, to reality. And if that philosophy, business plan, what have you, corresponds to reality, then it is a valid theory, and it's worth pursuing. You have another approach to decision-making, which is called the coherence theory of decision-making. And that is where a room of idiots get together, and they decide that something is coherent. And Jim says to Bob, this is coherent, don't you think so? And Bob says, yes, this is coherent. And they ask Ed, and Phyllis, and Shirley, and Mary, and everybody in the room says it's coherent. Since everybody in the room thinks it's coherent, then it's true. They have not done the second part of the exercise, and that is to find out how it relates to reality. The people who are proposing this clearly fit into the second theory of approach to decision-making. It sounds coherent, but how does it measure to reality? And I would maintain that it does not. They have come up, again, they have reinvented themselves. It didn't work as a commuter rail, the fallacy of their decision-making was exposed, and the fallacy of their decision-making was exposed because it was three times what they said it would cost to build, and they've been losing money on it ever since. So now they've reinvented themselves, and they say that it's going to be commuter rail slash commercial hauling freight. And they tell us they're going to have all of these customers. Where are the customers? Well, they're going to come. And I'm, we're supposed to sit here and make a business decision based on tens of millions of dollars, based on a group of people who approach decision-making on a coherent philosophy of business. And I'm going to say, not merely am I reluctant to do that, I will not do that. Look at their record. They cannot estimate the cost of anything. They cannot estimate the cost of anything, and they cannot make money doing this. Now, I'll, I'll go along, and I'll go through one more exercise, if that's what they wanna do, but these folks say, when asked if they have a contingency plan, if Iredale County does not become involved in it, then apparently they do not have one. So, if we wanna let Mr. Pope research this, that's fine. We can do that. But between now and the next time they appear here, a lot of people are gonna be asked to do a lot of things. People who are not in this room, or 20 and 30 miles south of here, and jump through a lot of hoops, and Mr. Roskowski and Mr. Smith are just a couple of. If these folks wanna answer, I can only speak for myself, they got an answer tonight, and the answer's no. It's been no, it will forever be no. I've listened to these people, obfuscate every time you try to answer them a question. I do not trust them, I do not trust their judgment, I do not trust their business model, I do not trust their theory of decision-making. I would suggest that we allow Mr. Pope to research this, if anyone needs a level of comfort with it, but we schedule a vote on this as soon as possible, so that our staff will quit wasting their time, if there's no interest on this board to move forward, so that other people can quit wasting their time, and they can come up with a business plan as soon as possible, if they deem that necessary, that does not, does or does not include Iredale County. But I will not vote in the affirmative, and I would, I would recommend, if Mr. Pope can do that, if he can give us a date when he can have us an answer to these questions, that's the night we schedule a vote. Would that be, I know the holiday's coming up, I guess the first week in January would be a little ambitious, wouldn't it, Mr. Pope?
Very ambitious.
Okay. Second meeting in January?
That'd be fine.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna instruct the staff to place as an agenda item, the second meeting in January, that we schedule a vote on the red line, and one way or the other, we're gonna put an end to this nonsense. Okay? And that's my opinion, and I'm sticking to it. All right? Any public comment, period?
I, though, if this was the right company to ask the question.
You can come, feel free to come forward, if you would state your name at the podium, please, ma'am.
While she's coming up, if I can, the reason I asked, wanted to ask the questions, those questions asked, is because I think it's important that people understand that there's some gaping holes in that plan, and I think that just helps to reveal some of it.
Okay. That's fair enough. Just a minute.
Hi, my name is Rhonda Kontos, and this, I'm scared to death, 'cause I don't know if this is the right place to do this or not, but if it's not, y'all just tell me, and I'll do it some other time. I'm here on behalf of Lifespan, and I think all of y'all know what Lifespan is, the organization. In Troutman, we are in desperate need of a driveway. Our current driveway is just, we've, it was potholes, and we've put, we've fixed it, and fixed it, and fixed it. We've had bids now, our lowest bid is $25,000. We have been trying to do fundraisers for the last year, and I don't know, we just had one at Randy Marion's, and for, it was in a paper for $3,500. Total, now we have $5,000. And we're trying to get the rest of the money from the community. But I was wondering if there's any way that if, if this is an option, and you tell me if I'm crazy on this or whatever, but if we come up with half of the money, is there any way that the county could, is this, do y'all have places or the means to maybe, if we give, if we give you $10,000 for the, for the material, that y'all would have a way maybe to do the work, that we could get it done for $25,000, and, or something like that? So, that's just something, I don't know if this is the right place, but I'm here, I've come to listen to you guys before, and so.
We don't have the ability to do anything in the House, ma'am, we'd have to contract with somebody if we assume the responsibility for doing it. Ms. Smith, would you allow this lady to contact you and talk to you about this?
Yes, sir.
And, you know, speak about it later, and we'll take this under consideration.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Does anybody else have a public comment? Is there any new business? County managers report.
I placed in front of you a package of information that might be irrelevant now, after the comments five minutes ago. Basically, though, it's probably the two documents that, between Joey and I, we've kinda feel like they're at least the most concise and to the point of the tomes that we've been given over time, so if you choose to read that, that's probably your best document to take a look at.
Okay.
Just to add to those comments, Mr. Chairman, based on the estimate that they would like the citizens of Iredale County to pick up, it's about $1,575 per citizen of Iredale County, not taxpayer, per citizen. That's a lot of money.
That's based on their numbers.
Right.
And their numbers are low.
Yeah.
Way low.
That's a paper dream.
I say this, I've seen them estimate costs, they're not good at it. We have no closed session that I'm aware of. Floor is open for adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion for adjournment from Ms. Griffith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.